Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to our first meeting of the new year. I hope everyone's year is off to a fantastic start. Today is Tuesday, January 9th. This is our work session. All board members are present in the boardroom. Along with our superintendent, Dr. Bryant. And I need to introduce a new member of the team. We have America Sullivan, who is, who is brand new to, not to ASD, but to the board. America comes to us with district experience as well as corporate experience. And we are very happy that she chose to come and help out the board. While Ms. Foster, who we still dearly love, is taking advantage of other opportunities. So, welcome, and we're glad to have you. And of course, Katie is here again with us to help us train. We're transitioning, helping with the transition for America. Alright, so we also have several staff who are in the, in the room, so we welcome you as well. So with that, I'd like to move on to item B. Are there any requests for information from board members that you have not sent in already? Or we are already working on? You guys have been good, actually, it's the new year, but you guys have been good about getting those to us. So keep it up. Member Donnelly.
Um, I'm still concerned that the administrative guidelines that have never been approved by this board regarding transgender and other pronoun issues, which aren't board policy and are not administrative regulations, but merely administrative guidelines, don't have any safety protocols for, for our children in them, our students in them. And I understand the most recent response to my follow-up on this from the superintendent was that there hadn't been an incident yet, but I don't want to wait till there isn't an incident to have clear rules for how we're going to deal to protect all our students.
Thank you, Member Donnelly. Dr. Bryant, did you want to respond?
Just, sure, thank you, through the President, Member Donnelly. I just want to clarify that what I shared via correspondence is that there were no documented accommodations for the use of locker room facilities. It wasn't, so there hasn't been incidents, but there are also no accommodations for locker room facilities, which is more broad than an incident. So I just want to clarify that. We are in receipt of your request for information and will be happy to process that and put it in Board Connect for you.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Bryant. Any other board member request for information? Yes, Member Higgins?
I'll go ahead and raise it real quick because it was raised at a HALO meeting, the Hillside Area Landowners Meeting. And that is what's going to happen with the sixth grade teachers? Are they going into middle school? What is, how is that being divided? There was a real interest there with, with the parents. And so I thought I'd share, I told them I'd share that today. And now I've met my obligation, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, through the President. We will provide a more robust update on that, but the short of it is that we want to give teachers options. Not all teachers would like to make that transition, but we certainly want to gather that feedback and accommodate appropriately. So we'll provide you a firmer write-up as to where we're at, unless Mr. Gustafson wants to share right now.
In addition to that, we are actually having an expo this next weekend regarding that for sixth grade teachers to come and take a look at what it means to teach at middle school if they so choose to go to middle school. So we're trying to prepare them and give them the best opportunity to make those decisions.
Okay, did you need more follow-up? Okay, thank you, Member.
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Superintendent, I, you know, we only usually have some 15 SROs to protect our schools. They only cover as assignments, and I know they're flexible and can go to other emergencies, but their assignments are limited to our senior high schools and one middle school. But I understand that we don't have 15 right now, we only have 11. And I was wondering, has, has your office been in communication at all with the municipality regarding trying to make sure we have our full even existing complement of SROs? And this board has actually adopted a resolution in the past calling for SROs to cover our middle schools also. So right now, we don't even have enough SROs to cover both our, our, our senior high schools, it seems like.
Through the President, Mr. Anderson, would you like to speak to that?
So, our shortages right now are mostly due to long-term leave or unplanned leave for medical or other reasons. We were down to nine for the bulk of the first quarter. Now we're back to 11. And yes, we've requested multiple times to, to get more, but they're already assigned and it's a, it's a leave issue. And we haven't been able to get additional SROs. But you're correct, I think it's 11 today. I'll confirm and we can put that in BC. But, but yeah, we started the year at nine.
Okay. Alright, seeing no other hands for?
I, I just want to say, I'm very concerned about the shortage of SROs. I mean, we have an official position that we'd like to see, you know, at least one SRO in at least every school, middle school and senior high school. And this is, I'm very worried about it.
Okay, thank you. So I think, remember, what I heard is that the superintendent and staff will put more information in Board Connect. And some of the absences is due to people being on leave. So we, we really can't put someone, maybe a sub, maybe, I guess, if that exists with SROs. Anyway, so we have that. We have three items, we're actually two, because I think we answered the middle school teachers issue or question. But the number of SROs and the administrative guideline responses for Member Donnelly. So not seeing any other questions, we're going to move on to our main discussion for today, which is our, which is the budget. Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, Madam President. So we'll transition to another conversation on our budget guidance document. That's in, it's in our consent agenda and likely up for discussion later tonight. So we wanted to use this time just to gather any additional questions that there may be about the guidance document, workshop, any potential ideas or concerns of the board, and to hopefully get one step closer to gathering the board's consensus on a path forward to balancing our budget. So with that said, Mr. Ratliff, would you like to share any additional comments?
Can I just ask a question before you start? Sure. I'm sorry. So the guidance, the discussion from last, our last meeting is in the existing memo, correct?
So we both have the guidance that we originally presented, and then there is a substitute memo that's attached that reflects what we gathered from the board, which was to move nurses and librarians to a not, an off-the-table, non-negotiable. That's what we had gathered from multiple board members as being a value. And then I believe we received an additional memorandum from a board member earlier this afternoon.
Oh, really?
That should be there, right? Am I correct that there's the Member Lessons memo? Okay.
Oh, is this the same memo from before? Or is this a new memo? I didn't see a memo.
Do you want me to talk about it right now or give you a very?
No, we'll just, at the right time when we're in the discussion. Okay, yeah, we need to have those.
Great, so with that said, Mr. Ratliff, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Madam President. No, I didn't have any additional comments. The only thing I was going to mention was the espersion out there that moved the nurses and librarians up to the section that's off the table for discussion for reduction.
Great, so with that said, given the information that we discussed last week and some questions and comments from board members since then, we really just want to open the floor in a work session style. Any questions there are about the memorandum? And of course, if board members want to speak to additional memorandums that are going around right now, we can do that too.
Alright, so, so there are two memorandums from the administration. One dated December 19th and one dated the 9th. Am I confused?
So there should be the original memo we discussed this time in December.
In December.
Right, and, and then we have the substitute memo, not the one that was just passed out, but unless that one was.
That is Andy's memo that was just passed out. I have Kelly's.
Got it, alright, great, now I'm on the same page. So then what you have before you is the substitute memo from the administration that makes the change regarding librarians and nurses.
Okay, so I think I want to can you, somebody walk us through the stuff memo before we go to Member Lessons?
Sure.
Memo?
Yeah, Mr. Ratliff, can you guide us through the memo?
One of the things and if you have like the amount of everything on the list, if you can give us a general amount of savings, if possible? Because I still only see I think I see the device of, of, of thing for, an amount for devices and amount for the dome rental. I don't see any other amounts.
Okay.
Of savings.
So I think it'd be helpful if Mr. Ratliff just gives a top-line summary of the major items and then an estimate of potential savings.
Thank you.
Sure, so for the things that are still on the table, we have the amounts for the district fund balance. The PTR, depending on where we land on the, all these other items, may be adjusted up or down, depending on how much we can take out. That could be either a few million or can be, you know, tens of millions, depending on how far we go with it. Ignite, I believe, was around two and a half million-ish. District admin, again, that's something that depending on where we go with the other items and where we have to reduce, that could go up or down as well. I believe we had it at around the million, million and a half mark for that. Let's see, increased estimates for unfilled positions. I think we'll talk a little bit more about this, the work sessions ago on Thursday, not the work session, the Finance Committee meeting on Thursday in the context of where we're at this year with our fund balance projections and how that relates to our attrition. But we could increase that, I think in our pro forma budget, we had about 36 million or so built into that. We could potentially add, you know, four or five more million to that, although it does increase the risk that you go over budget in the end for next year. The hiring delays, I think we had that pegged at around a million dollars. That's kind of dependent too about how long you have those hiring delays. That was about a week's worth, or two weeks' hiring delay for all positions that aren't either special education or classroom teachers. Those are generally the ones we pulled out of that, because those are the ones we really need to get into place quickly. General fund travel was in the $400,000 range, I believe. Reducing the number of holdback positions, that would depend on how many we reduce. So if we reduced, we're, right now we have a pool of about 31 holdback positions in the budget. If we reduce 10 of those, that would be maybe 1.2 million. Then increasing the activity fees, that's going to depend on what we increase them to. But generally, that's not going to create a whole lot of money, although it'll kind of, if we do it over time, it'll kind of keep pace with inflation. So maybe a couple hundred thousand there at the most. Same with rental fees, if we increase those, 100,000, 200,000 increase in revenue. And then the delay in any curriculum purchase that we might have planned, again, I don't know. We have money set aside to replace curriculum. So if we took that out, that's maybe a million or million and a half total. So that's really kind of the cost estimates that we have on those. But again, it kind of depends on where, what else we take off the table and how far we want to go with some of these reductions.
Okay. Alright, thank you, that's helpful. When we say increased activity fees, what? I mean, is that per family, per kid, or both?
It could be both, like, right now we have a family cap. We don't have, we took the family cap out. And it's capped like two, it's okay, it's two sports fees per kid, and then after that, they don't pay anymore. So we could take off the per student cap and increase the amount per sport.
So we would remove the cap?
That would be one option, yeah.
Okay.
So if a student's paying, playing three or four sports, they would be paying the, was it $200 fee now for? Yeah, so if they play four sports, they'd be paying for $200 fees essentially for that.
Okay.
Right now, they're capped at two.
Okay, so are there any other questions on the, the administration's memo? Any, Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Question for Dr. Bryant and the team, after the revised memo was drafted, we received correspondence from leadership of the dome, reducing their, offering to reduce their costs and save the district roughly $40,000. Was curious if administration had a chance to review that and has perspective as to if that makes, if the savings can mitigate the need to reduce services at that venue entirely. Thank you.
Through the President, I did receive that information yesterday afternoon, so it's pretty fresh information, the, the savings, but they are savings, which is something for us to consider. I think what the board has to weigh is that the vendor made it clear that this would be a one-time discount on the rate of the dome, meaning that it wouldn't be off the table in future years. So really, we're at an impasse where we can take and realize the savings now and continue business as usual or to go ahead and make a change that may be inevitable if the school funding situation doesn't improve. But it does add value, it also is a cost.
Other question? Yes, on the administration's memo, January 9th memo. Alright, not seeing any Member Lessons? Yeah, I know you have a substitute memo.
Yeah, and for purposes of clarity, maybe we'll call this S2. So it's not labeled as such, but I think they're passing out paper copies of it, but let's just call it S2, so we keep everything straight. This I generated out of reflection that it is incredibly important that the administration has a reasonable amount of guidance, which I don't think exists yet from the board, so they can shape a budget. I'll wait until copies show up. So again, it, and it reflects the administration's direct ask at the, sort of the bottom of the original memo, a request for amendments. There was also, oh good, there's also a sort of a quick spreadsheet. So I thought about a number of things. Number one, I thought that I would use the idea of spending the fund balance down to 5%, which produces $71 million in savings, as a source of targeted investments. And number one, we can allocate that to offset the likelihood of the majority of sizable increases to people-teacher ratios. However, I think there's merit in considering allocating a portion of the fund balance directly into our reading and math goals. And I've targeted about nine and $3 million for reading and math respectively in a way that aligns with some, some recent research, specifically out of California. But in essence, targeted spending in early literacy is a more effective use of funds, maybe 13 times more effective than a general increase in school spending. We, we don't have the money for a general increase in school spending. We don't have the money to, to do what we want to do, but I do think we could choose to allocate some of these resources towards core board goals for reading and math, specifically at our schools where largest, the largest aggregate, with, with aggregate amount of students who are struggling is greatest. And so there's a lot of detail about that, but it's roughly $1,200 per student in the schools where need is greatest. And I guess I'll move on from, from there. So there's a large section on, I guess pages two and three, that, that talks about how we could invest in reading and math. And then in thinking about items that are off the table for budget reduction considerations, I think we really need to channel the more case and think about what most effectively aligns our available revenue with instruction. That is absolutely critical in my mind. So I'm supportive of a lot of the things that the administration perceived from our, our earlier work session. A critical piece that needs to be removed in my mind is sports and activities. I think the cost that we heard for sports and activities is $5 million. And I've said this before, I am deeply supportive of sports and activities. We also have a governor who vetoed half of what the legislature authorized in terms of a one-time increase to our funding situation. We don't have the money right now to invest in sports and activities. $5 million in sports and activities is roughly 50 teachers. I think we need to prioritize our teachers. And I would urge the board to consider aligning every available dollar towards instruction with the possibility that this would be a priority for reinstating should the legislature and the governor produce the funds we need over the coming months. So I want to make that clear, that I think the board should remove sports and activities from being off the table. I added a few items to being off the table, because I think that they support our board goals for stu-, well, our intentions for the student growth that needs to happen through Ignite, through removing, reduce support for immersion class size reduction, reducing the number of holdback positions. My, my general sense of holdback positions is that they tend to be very useful in balancing class sizes in schools where enrollment numbers may be most volatile. And so I think that that's an important consideration, and that's why I would want to take them off the table from being something to consider for reduction. I think that we need to keep on pace with the curriculum that our students need. And this actually does reflect the sheer nurses, librarians that I think is in memo 087S that we also just looked at. I have a couple of other proposals in here. I think that when I looked at the ratios in the FY '24 budget, I'm concerned that South High School doesn't have all of the assistant principals that it needs. So I propose that we true up our assistant principal investment there. And so that might need, well, it might be subject to enrollment projections for next year. I know that we have the Diamond Estates thing, which may be a factor, so it's something to think about. I continue to think that noon duty pay, an additional investment there, would help diminish the district's need to rely on certificated staff in non-teaching functions. I'd rather have our teachers focused on teaching and, and lesson planning than having them out doing noon duty. There were a number of items that I took from the off-the-table list. And I added to the off-the-table list, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm on the, on, I'm on the on-the-table list, I'm sorry. Okay, the board supports the following budget reductions to remain on the table for budget development purposes. I removed some things from them, but I also added sports and activities. The education center rent reduction, there's a non-action item. sports and activities. Um, the education center rent reduction, there's a non-action item, and I want to commend the team for um opening a pathway for substantial savings in education center lease. Um, which, so I think that that can help with our budget uh scenario. Um, so I put that there. Um, again, um, I'm looking at potential counselor and assistant principal reductions that might be necessary depending on enrollment in Chuyac and Eagle River High School. Um, they have lower numbers of students per principal and counselor than most of our other schools, so I would want to adjust them so that all of our students have roughly similar fair access to principals and counselors. Um, I don't want to take anything from any student, but I'm just looking at the numbers. Um, I think that it might be most helpful to look for board members to look at the whole spreadsheet that I put together. It's, it looks like this. Mr. Donley is looking at it. Um, and it just, it lists out how I balance the budget. This is something that none of us really did this time around, but we did it last year. You know, we sat down at our big boards and we came up with how we would close the budget. Um, but it includes spending the fund balance to 5%, investing in reading and math, making administrative reductions to 3%. It includes substantial pupil teacher ratios that I would prioritize for reversal uh pending um either a veto override and/or an increase to the base student allocation. Um, it includes cutting sports and activities, the additional investment in noon duty pay, the cut to the general fund travel, um, cutting student device replacement, cutting virtual summer school enrichment, the counselor and assistant principal adjustments, um, the education center rent reduction, um, a possible increase in rental fees, a two-week hiring delay, and then just sort of an additional administrative recommendation to close the gap. So in the end, you know, I cut a little bit more than $98 million because I wanted to make the investments in our reading and math. So I will pause there. It's a pretty substantial document.
And it is, and I think, um.
It is pretty substantial. Um. And, and I guess, uh, um, I guess I would want to hear it from the administration um and from board members. Um, you know, I think whatever we do, it's a board decision, it's not an individual board member decision. So I do thank uh member lessons for bringing her thoughts forward. Uh, I don't agree with all of them, but I think they're worth discussing. But for every for every item that there's a, there's a consequence, and there's a, there's a so cutting positions, I'm uncomfortable with um identifying positions because those are people, and that's personnel, and that's up to the superintendent. Uh, so if the idea, i- i- if the goal is to um direct the superintendent to do X, Y, and Z relative to counselors, uh, APs, et cetera, that's fine, but to identify positions this way in the budget makes me personally uncomfortable, uh, because that's what we pay the superintendent to do and his staff. Um, uh, so I think what I want to do is hear from this, from uh board, any board member want to uh share? Yes, member Donley, before we go to the staff.
Thank you, Madam President. I was just trying to understand the categories here on the
On the
The reduction
Oh, the reduction sheet.
Um, number four, five, and number six are PTR reduction or increases. But I, I don't know if I understand the code. Is that grades four through 12 on the first one, then it says plus five? What is, does that mean?
That is, that's a great question. So everything on there came from um one of these stickers. So it's a layered approach to PTR increases, so the first one is a PTR for increase for grades four through 12 of a plus five, and the administration says
Five
Plus five.
Per classroom?
Plus five, yep, for, to save $19.7 million. That's how you hold harmless, hold grades K through three harm. None of this is pretty.
And then the next one, it would be an additional three, so total of eight for the six through 12 classes?
Yes.
I don't know how we're gonna fit them in a classroom.
Uh, there could be fire code violations there. Um, really, this is for purposes of building a budget that's balanced, and um if you I want it, and I, I think I spoke to this at the last meeting, I want us to be able to reverse things. And so if you look in the 087S2 document that I put together, um, I guess the second to last page, you know, says that if, so we received memo 012 in, that we approved in August of 2023, authorized $24.8 million in one-time operational funding, and this was because CSHB39 authorized one-time funding for K12 uh in the amount of 175 million to be distributed to each district on the basis of adjusted average daily membership. The governor vetoed half of the one-time funds appropriated, reducing the allocation of 87 million. Anchorage's share was estimated to be about 25 million. So if the veto override, and I detail this out, uh, takes place in January, such that ASD would receive an additional, or the remaining $24.8 million in operational funding that the legislature authorized in May, the board would prioritize, number one, the reversal of the PTR plus five for grades four through 12, and then as much of the PTR plus three as possible. It's like another 5.15 million. Um, so that's the very first thing that we would do if we received a veto override in the next couple of weeks um before, actually, we even go to a budget cycle. And then if there is additional um work that is, comes to fruition in Juneau, um, whether it's an additional, um, an additional increase to the BSA, um, or if an overall BSA increase is passed at a scale that would result in ASD receiving more than $24.9 million, um, then the board would first prioritize those PTR reversals and then reverse the plus three increase, reverse the PTR plus one increase that we approved for K through 12 this year. Um, I think I would be interested in walking that PTR increase back. Um, I think I would prioritize the reversal of the sports and activities cut that I'm proposing. I'd reverse the, the assistant principal counselor adjustments, um, and then sort of the other things that I, that I put on this list. So it's really, I tried to think about what could be reversed, what should be prioritized. Um, should additional funding from Juneau take place? Manifest.
And and I guess what I would like to see is guidance that gives the superintendent and the staff that guidance that we are, we, the board, don't decide. Um, where the, I mean, it, it's, this is so intricate that I don't know that we have um that we know the impact of, you know, when I look at investing, on, on this page, that first item, where you have the invest 12.6% of of fund balance in reading. I agree that we need to invest in reading and math, but I think the superintendent and his staff will know where that, what that looks like. So I'm not, I'm not comfortable as a board member saying it's going to be 12, 12.6%. It might be something else. Um, because that's what is needed based on the guidance that we give to the staff. So, um, I, so I, so I just, so when it comes to I really being specific, as specific as you're being, I would like, it just makes me uncomfortable. Um, because I think, uh, I, I, I know for everything we cut, there's going to be a consequence, there's going to be impact. And we are not always in a position to know what that is as board members. Uh, we get to have a high-level view. Uh, some of us are in and out of schools, and we get to know what people are saying to us and, and, and how they're sharing, what they're sharing. Um, but, but how, but the domino effect of all of this, I think, um, so I caution us to be really careful uh with the guidance, um, and, and uh give, give, give the type of guidance that is not going to be so specific as positions and uh people, because they, those are people. And I don't know that we should be, um, we should be identifying positions to be added or cut in a budget conversation. I, I think that, that makes me uncomfortable as well.
Okay, I, I appreciate that feedback. I mean, there was a sticker that said metrics, metric-based counselors per FTE, and there was a
Right.
I mean, that, that, that's where that, and that, and I just looked at our FY24.
But it may not be those schools that
It may not, and right. And this may be, that is old, that's year-old data at this point. It doesn't even reflect necessarily this year's enrollment.
Exactly.
Um, so I understand your, your concern.
Okay.
But this is me throwing.
Okay, let's start some round. Uh, member Jacobs, I see your mic on.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um, if, you know, at some point, I'm assuming um the administration is going to offer feedback.
Again.
Um, while, while that's happening, I guess, uh, maybe if we could add into the equation, um, I I think I concur with member lessons in the sense that if, if we were to um tha- that it can, there, there is a path to uh strategically investing funds to improve outcomes while making cuts. Um, I'm, I'm not opposed to that concept. I'm not sure that and I guess, and that's, I guess, what maybe the nature of my question, the point that maybe can be addressed is um the approach that's here could potentially allocate funding to buildings for reallocation um at the principal level. Um, whereas I think we've discussed that our summer school funding may be lacking at this point, and we've historically, and um, at least within the last couple of years, with additional federal funding have invested more than we would typically budget to target students that we, individual students that we know would benefit from the additional programming time. And so I'm wondering if, if that's something that was, or is considered um a viable option or something that we would need additional resources to facilitate, maybe where summer school funding is right now would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, so there's quite a bit to chime in.
Can we have member Halloman go before you?
Sure, oh, yeah. I didn't see my post.
Oh, did you have your microphone? And then Higgins?
Go ahead.
I, I did want to say that what we've seen most years for decades is um trying to find a way to continue to go forward, doing everything we're doing with a little bit less money, or because, with less inflation-adjusted money, which turns out to be a real thing when you're a big organization. Um, I think at some point, the board has to do some of the things that member lessons suggested. We're, we're at a point where, say, if you look at activities, we're not going to be able to continue to do what we're doing. In fact, we're not doing what we used to do.
Right.
Um, we, we don't provide transportation like we used to. We, we don't provide as much in the way of resources. We've skinny that down. And I'll say as an aside, that's one of the reasons you can't talk much about programs or budgets without impacting specific people is because in a lot of cases where there used to be four or five people doing some particular thing, there's one. And so if you're going to skinny that program down, you're, you're cutting somebody because it's been skinny down and skinny down to where there's just one name left in a department or an activity. But I think activities might be an interesting thing for the board to consider that going forward, we're going to have to either choose winners or losers within activities. Are we going to cut one sport? For, for women and men? Or are we gonna have fewer games? Are we going to have fewer practices? Or are we going to continue to diminish a little bit at a time? Or are we going to say we can just no longer do this, and we've got to focus our resources on instruction in our core area? Um, everything that's been added on to K12 education or pre-K12 education has some benefit. There's a reason we feed kids. And part of it's convenience, but also a part of it is we just realize you get better outcomes if you, if you put food in them, it's cheaper than hiring teachers. Um, transportation, we get more kids in school when we transport them. That's not really our core thing. We could tell everybody to get to school, but obviously, you, you're having a tremendous and unequal impact on people when you do that. But why are we in the transportation business? Why are we in the food business? Why are we in the basketball business? Why are we in so many areas? And, and the answer is because it does provide decent outcomes. But if we keep doing everything we're doing less and less well, which is what we are doing over 20 years now, it, it becomes something that nobody, nobody wants to support and nobody respects. I personally think there are people in the state that have that goal, and, and they've managed to convince other people to come along with them for other reasons. But I, I do think the board has to take a hard look at that. We can only keep asking the administration to work magic with a budget year after year so many times before we finally have to say they're just things we're not going to do. And it would only be fair to the public to talk to them about it forthrightly and say we don't see being able to continue to do these certain things, but they're going to be very tough choices. In a lot of ways, I think it'll be tougher than choosing schools to close because there won't be as much logic in it. There, there won't be as, as at least in the case of re, re, of closing schools, we were still going to educate all those kids somewhere that they might have to have a little bit more of a bus ride or walk to and everything. But as we drop activities, or as we make the staffing for them so weak that we're not doing it very well, we're stopping things that we used to do for kids. And I, I think it's time that we were adamant about that in public and that we we just tried to get the public's input on whether or not they really support this, which is painful for, for people that write checks for taxes. Um, or do we want to let these things go? And that, I, I think the board has that responsibility. And then the administration has the responsibility to try to work inside of it. But I don't think we can keep watching the resources dwindle for the administration without at some point taking an action as a board to, to reduce our responsibilities.
Okay, thank you, member uh Halloman. Member Higgins?
Yeah, nobody knows what the budget's going to look like yet. The assembly, legislature's not doing anything forward funding, they're holding things back. It's an election year, so maybe some people who are not really supportive of public education will vote for it with the hopes that they can maintain control. I don't know. Uh, but whatever's going to go on, uh, and we have to look at these cuts. What I don't want to see, and I appreciate member lessons uh comments, what I don't want to see is that we only focus on cutting back what we're currently doing and maintaining status quo and getting the same results, and maybe less. Um, we've got to be willing to look forward and say, if we had more money, and we can argue that point to legislature, what would we be accomplishing? If they just provide more money and they say, well, we'll do more of the same thing that we're doing, or we're not making any changes, we're not addressing, as member lessons pointed out, we've got areas where they need additional funding or they could benefit from it, we think we need to come out with, with not just the cuts, but also talk about what we need to be spending more money into. And it can't just be maintain status quo. We have to look at changes to get the kind of results that we want to get. We're not going to get academic growth, we're not going to get the kind of changes we want if we just keep doing the same thing over and over and over again, when we've seen the results which are not acceptable. We've got too many kids that are not reading at grade, uh, we've got too many kids with math issues. We've got uh schools that differentiate, depend upon income and, and, and demographics that are not being successful. And we need to be able to, to point to them and say, this is what you're giving up. These are the foregoing opportunities with additional funding, not just maintaining what we got. Maybe we can talk about how we may have to cut hockey, maybe that'll get people waking up uh, or something like that. We need to go beyond that. We need more of a comprehensive, if we had the funding, what would we be doing? Because without that, they're going to say, well, what do you need to maintain what you got? Uh, well, the truth is, we can't maintain what we got if you can't hire the teachers. Uh, so we have a, a issue there, but what would we do with additional funding? Would we be changing curriculums? Would we be uh doing the course summer school? But there's more to it than that. And so I'm hoping that we end up with some sort of overview of what we're hoping to accomplish if we get the funding we think we deserve, so we can understand how we would benefit the kids. I don't think we're communicating that as well as what we need to, and that's a tough situation, but I really believe that's what's needed. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Dr. Bryant?
Thank you, uh, Madam President. Well, I, I think first off, I just want to state that I, I really appreciate that the eight of us are in this together, and we're all on the same page when it comes to we're, we're trying to figure out how to invest what limited dollars that we have into student outcomes. Really, We're we're trying to figure out how to invest what limited dollars that we have into student outcomes. Really, this conversation is more about the how. And um, I I do have some concerns with the the memo that was presented, not because it doesn't fulfill the spirit of investing in in student outcomes. It's more about the how. Um, you know, one of the concern, right? I guess there are three things that I'll address um in my initial comments. One, I I do agree with the the sentiment shared by um President Bellamy. I would encourage the board to focus more on the staffing model that we present in the budget book versus specific schools. So, for example, on page twenty seven, sad that I know this, but page twenty seven of the current budget book um is the staffing model for high schools, and I think that. That was the basis for what was presented today. I'd rather have a conversation as to how we can gather feedback so the administration can adjust that staffing allocation. If we perceive it's not meeting the needs of students. Currently, we have a, I believe, a four hundred to one. Allocation of principals to high schools roughly based on enrollment with with some exceptions made for for various site base. Um, context, but uh what I'm hearing is that there there may be an opportunity to fine tune it. My point is, is I would encourage the board to focus more on the system level staffing allocation versus specific schools for a number of reasons. Um, but with that said, my bigger point is around the how when it comes to the the P T R. In the administration's recommendation for budget guidance. Essentially, what we're trying to do is to maintain a semblance of what education in school looks like right now for students by making as few changes as possible. When the administration was proposing a P T R change for K four through twelve, it would be a minimal change. Um, it wouldn't be a plus three plus five. Um, but the difference is that in this proposal, what we're saying is let's target ten thousand of our students based on um member lessons memo. And let's invest additional resources with the intention of it helping those students achieve um their academic goals i- is what I'm gathering. I I think where I'm concerned, though, is that by targeting that ten thousand group of students with the the additional funds. That does leave over thirty thousand students that are facing a P T R increase of plus three, plus five, or in some situations, a plus eight. And what that means is that it would be diminished electives. It would mean very large class sizes, and what that reality looks like. Does give me a a lot of hesitation and concerns, and I would say. I don't think those are aligned to where our goals are as a board. Um, so for that reason, it's hard for me to to endorse a P T R of plus three. But that said, the the numbers are what they are. We're in this situation because we're all trying to grapple with the budget development process. But a plus three plus five for any school does give me pause, and I I just want to say that while I understand the intent, and I think it comes from a good place. Um, the reason why we didn't do that in the administrative proposal was because we wanted to. Be more subtle in our approach, a a more moderate increase in P T R, increasing the cost for sports and activities so that we can have sports and activities and. Maintain electives so that there's some semblance of normalcy going into next year versus um the proposal, which I'm afraid would mean some. Pretty drastic changes going into next year from what students have today. Um, I may be missing context, but based off of the memo that I just read earlier this afternoon, I am concerned about that. And I think the third point that I I just want to share for the board to noodle on as we go through this very difficult process is. P T R, uh, you know, I have heard that that is something that this board is committed to um reversing or adjusting. If there are more funds, uh, I I think that the spirit of that i- is good, but I do want to remind the board that from a logistical perspective. That that is one of the most difficult things to reverse. So, for example, um. It would be somewhat within the realm of possibility if there were a veto override, because that would happen relatively soon. We would know what the numbers are and we could budget accordingly. But I think what's more realistic to happen is what happened this past year, where the legislature did authorize um additional funds for schools, but we didn't receive. Notice of the governor's veto until July, and by then it would be months after teachers have been released. A plus five plus three P T R would be major displacements and disruptions, potentially. Layoffs to teachers depending on how the math shakes out, and that would be one of the most difficult things to to reverse, even if there were additional funds. Um, because again, when we would know of the additional funds, it would be well after. Those teachers have been released and potentially found other positions. So I am concerned about that. And all that to say, I I do appreciate aspects of the proposal, but I I. Wanted to say that the the rationale behind the original proposal was to try to keep business as usual. As much as we can, given the scarcity of resources and inadequate funding. So that that was the rationale for the previous proposal. Um, but I I would love to hear more about the proposal on the table. Those are my initial concerns, though.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. Um, any other staff? Comments from?
Yeah, any other.
From your staff. Okay, uh, member Jacobs.
Um, yeah, thank you, Madam President. Um. I, Dr. Bryant, you were given a lot to sound off on there, so I just want to circle back at some point. If you have a chance to weigh in on. Um, and and maybe it's not part of the budget guidance conversation. Maybe it's not part of the budget conversation. Maybe it's a part of our conversations, and you know where how we would utilize resources, but. I don't feel like we. Um, are utilizing the pretty um impactful data that I've seen regarding our summer school wins. Um. And the additional funds that were put in there, the the academic gains that were achieved. And so is there? Am I overstating that, or do we see that as a a vision for how we can utilize more resources if they happen to uh be given to us? Um, or. Is there a way to strategically reduce expenditures in the short term in the spirit of member lessons? Um, vision and then utilize what we know works and what we've done as a district, but have had to reduce, at least propose, reduce uh a reduction to in this budget. So that's that's kind of one, um, that's one silo of information I'd like, and then I have a different question, but I'll wait.
Uh, through the president, yeah. Thank you, Member Jacobs. I forgot about the summer school question in the in the middle of that. Um, I would say that would be an area that's potentially uh a a hybrid of what's being proposed, right? So instead of investing resources at the P T R level during the year, are there ways that we can increase investments in summer school? I think that would be, from my vantage point, uh, more doable and potentially have an impact on students. I do want to remind the board, though, that one of the things that we did hold harmless in the budget guidance was. Cred recovery with summer school specifically in mind. So it is something on our minds that we did want to hold harmless as much as possible. Given the the resources that we have. Um, Mr. Gustafson, did you have anything else about summer school you wanted to add?
We are. Through the chair, we are looking at all the different models of summer school. Just a reminder that we did cut summer school for this upcoming summer already, so anything we cut. Um, in this next budget is actually affecting that as well. Um, the proposal that we're talking about here for a cut this year is, of course, the one time, the first try. Or or limiting it to one try online. Um, we are looking at like the results that summer school have made. Now, we also got to remember it's. We aren't having a really high success rate of getting kids to actually come to summer school, even if they're. Recommended for it. Um, so we have a lot of different options, but we're just starting to kick off those. Looks, we're kind of looking at what does middle school mean for summer school, kind of looking, maybe we're gonna probably look. Um, at putting more of that into the elementaries as well, but we we definitely uh, we have a model now that works. It's just getting more kids involved and having more money, of course, to be able to do that with. But. We already are looking at a this this summer, it's upcoming, having less money for summer school than we did a year this last summer.
Okay, thank you. Member lessons?
Yeah, just to speak to the concept of summer school, um. I think I'm concerned because I I don't know enough about it. Um, I don't know what the costs per people are for summer school, and I'm also concerned. So I don't know if that's the best and highest use of. Whatever it costs to educate a student in summer school. Um, and I don't, um. And my my understanding is that it was limited to students who already had rates of attendance at seventy five percent or higher. And I could be, I could be wrong on that, but I think that that was a parameter of who participated in summer school. So based on our overall attendance, that's excluding a lot of kids. So how do you get the kids who. Don't have great attendance rate, who may be in some of our. Um, may have greater risks associated or more more headwinds for uh. To use that A S D um term. Um, so. I'm a little skeptical of summer school because I don't know how much a cost per student, and. I don't know who's left out of it.
Other comments, questions? Yes, Member Wilson.
So I I appreciate the details because. We all know Kelly's amazing with the details. Um, I struggle with a few things. In in this proposal, and. The largest thing I struggle with is. Although I know we need the investment, granted. Our kids deserve every penny of the investment. But. To invest. An additional twelve million. In our K through three. For the nine million in K through three anyways, that basically the twelve million. At at the expense of increasing our class sizes. For our fourth through twelfth grade graders for up to eight. Additional students in a class. I I can't even think about doing that to our teachers. Um, knowing. How hard they struggle with the number of students they have in the class and the lack of support they have now. So it's it's the. It's not that it's not a need. It's definitely a need, but it's the expense, um, at what expense? So there's there's things that I struggle with in here that. Are too much of an expense for me, so they don't. Balance out based on. Based on the budgets we have to deal with, sadly and unfortunately, everything takes away from our kids, but but I I can't. In good conscience, put a huge investment in our K through three. At the expense it would hit our fourth through twelfth graders. I just can't do it.
Sure. Member lessons.
Yeah, I think one of the questions that I had, I mean, the. Original. Zero eight seven and zero eight seven S from the administration. Didn't necessarily. Offer a concrete budget proposal, right? You didn't say how much P T R would increase, you know, here or there. If you were to, for sake of discussion, eliminate the proposed investment in reading and math for twelve million dollars. Put that back into P T R. You could eliminate the grade, the six through twelve plus three, and some of the four through twelve plus five. You're still left with a huge. P T R increase. I mean. The the layered approach that I have. Um, amounts to like twenty seven, almost twenty eight million dollars in. P T R savings. Pullback twelve million dollars that you've still got sixteen million dollars. Of. P T R savings, which is greater than a P T R plus three increase for grades four through twelve. I'm looking at. A sheet from the December work session. I mean, just the scale of the underfunding that we're dealing with. I mean, that's that's what this comes down to. And so we are rearranging the ships on that, rearranging the decks on that Titanic right now because we're we're dealing with what um. The the outcome of our. State leaders. Decisions. Have produced, right? So we are dealing with massively diminished resources. So I I don't think that you can hold P T R harmless in any scenario. Whether or not you choose to make an investment in reading and math. So is it, yeah, is the scale of the P T R increase going to be? Bad or terrible?
Right, um, through the president, if I could um ask Mr. Ratliff just for a ballpark, um, because I don't want to get the numbers incorrect on the record. Um, if we were to spend fund balance down to five percent and do a plus one for grades um four through twelve. And adopted the changes in the memorandum, what would be the the total um savings that we would apply towards the deficit? If you have that off, I thought.
Did you say adopt that?
Basically, the memorandum, just quantifying the memorandum as we discussed it with the plus one P T R, because I think there may be confusion as to what P T R did we. Were we imagining in our heads when we put the P T R on the memo, right? Because it wasn't a plus three. It was more in the realm of plus one, plus two. I think that's the clarity that I wanted to provide.
Right, and I'd be hesitant to do that math.
Okay.
Here at this time.
Perfect, great. If you don't have it, let's not need.
But I would say, you know, the kind of the purpose of this memo is more to get broad guidance rather than to actually get the balance, the budget to balance. We still have to go through the budget requests from all our departments and everything and see what changes we want to make. It's not just kind of a cut and dry thing where we're looking at the pro forma, which is doing. Services the exact same way as we were the current year. So we do have changes. We want to make uh sixth grade to middle school is a good example. We have. Staff moving over. We're gonna have it uh principals, counselors, security. You know, we have all these changes we need to make. We need to figure out how to balance the budget, but. You know, the purpose of this really to get more of that broad guidance of what's going to be acceptable to the board. Um, I do like the memo that Miss Lessons put forward that does show, you know. How we can prioritize it, and I mean, last year we did a similar exercise where we did get to a. Uh, closer to a balanced budget during that exercise. Um. Prior to that, though, most of what we've done had been. We would get a little bit of guidance at the board. The district would come back with a, here's a budget that the administration recommends, and then the board can amend that or change or approve it. Um. But we can certainly go back and put some numbers to these over the next hour or so and come back with the. During the main meeting and discuss a little further, if that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
And and I think it's important to, for all of us to remember that this is the guidance memo. This is not the budget. Uh, but this is the guidance that we're giving to the administration. Um. Uh, Dr. Bryant, did you have a?
Uh, no, I think uh that that covers the the main point other than a another point that I I did want to just. Put out there is as we think about what we prioritize, if there is funding, I I do want to remind the board and the public that there is a structural deficit that will exist even with a funding increase. So, for example, um, you know, the district received, let's say, twenty five million dollars last year from the legislature. That is being applied towards the deficit this year, and we'll be in a similar position. Even with the funding increase from the legislature. So in some ways, unfortunately, it's not always a matter of what will we add back. It will be a matter of what will we apply towards the F Y twenty six structural deficit. Because of the Titanic analogy that this lesson's put forward.
Okay, so we are a little over, uh, but we have time. I'd like to extend for about fifteen minutes. If that's okay with everybody. Thank you, Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. So I'm gonna go down a a different track, but before I do, I just want to acknowledge and thank uh Member Lessons for um out of the box thinking as always. Um. I. I think I'll echo what she said, which is there, there isn't a great solution here. And so it's what what bad choice that impacts students do we want to make? And so it, um, anything on this memo could be fairly criticized because it adds value to young people in Anchorage, and it will drive people to leave Alaska. A hundred percent guaranteed. Um, so. With that said. What we've had a couple items recently um that have come up both with the dome as well as the. Education center lease where we've been able to reduce expenses, which in turn can add value in maintaining. Um, as many of our programs and services as possible. Is there an opportunity, um, even if it doesn't occur prior to the the um. Adoption of our budget. For administration to circle back on every existing contract that A S D has that can potentially be renegotiated, um suspended temporarily till. Um, our funding status is more clear or potentially canceled, given the deficits we have. Uh, to extract some savings. And the reason why I'm asking is, you know. I I imagine there are vendors that I want to say I'm certain not knowing the answer, but um, we've we have two different entities that we've been able to work with to reduce expenses. I would assume there are more. Um, it seems only fair that we. Review our books, ensure that there are all the contracts that we have um are adding value. Uh, that there isn't any wiggle room there for at least on a temporary basis, and it may be that we circle through and um. Indicate that there's, without a reduction in expenses, something just might not make sense, given these. Significant increase to class sizes, right? And the sacrifice we're asking educators and support staff to make. And so. Is there room for an amendment that provides general guidance to administration to look at? Personal service or personal service contracts in that way uh for potential savings, um. Both before and after the budget process. Be I as Dr. Bryant, you alluded to, this conversation doesn't end even if the veto override occurs. So this needs to be an ongoing process anyway. So those, that's, I guess, my question.
Uh, Member Jacobs, great question. Uh, I I think the best answer to that is. If I would like the board to understand that that process is occurring. Um, I don't. Necessarily think that an amendment for us to review every area for savings is necessary for my. I don't necessarily think that an amendment for us to review every area for savings is necessary from my vantage point. But we certainly welcome amendments to that effect. I mean, we hear it loud and clear that every area for savings is something that should be of interest to us. But unfortunately, when we're talking about a structural deficit in the magnitude of nearly a hundred million dollars, it's not going to be as fruitful as all of us hope, but it's certainly something we need to continue doing. But I I do just want to state what doesn't happen or what what we don't talk about at these meetings are really the meetings where the cabinet is going line by line through everything from staffing to contracts to various costs. So that is taking place. But if there are areas where we can demonstrate even more savings, we'd love to do that.
Madam President, could I follow up?
Yes, you may.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Bryant. And I I figured that was part of your response and I appreciate it. I think what a missing component that maybe we can add value in is having the board speak with one voice and saying this should be a priority for savings, which then you can use in your conversations with these vendors or individuals to say, you know, we have a mandate to reduce expenses where we can. And and so feel free to utilize that authority as as weight during those conversations. So I'll I'll consider how I proceed forward with proposing anything in between now and when we pass the guidance. Thank you.
Hey. Any other questions, comments? Yes, Member Donley.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to restate my my position regarding the, an objection to taking the middle school model, which is adding additional planning time for middle school instructors off the table, which the the initial resolution does as far as it's more than two million dollars, and I do not think it's as important as holding our class sizes down or even girls being able to play volleyball in high school or other sports. It's just not as important to me as some of the other items that are still on this list to be cut, such as ignite and immersion class size reduction. I wish it was still on the table in this resolution.
Are you on the original memo?
Yes.
Guidance, okay. Is there any other comments? So this item is on our agenda tonight on the consent agenda. I expect that it would probably get pulled and we'll have more discussion. So again, it's guidance and hopefully the community will understand that it's guidance. It is not, it does not define the final budget. Because I can anticipate, and we know that certain items are going to get, generate a lot of discourse and confusion and unhappiness, but I don't know that we can get out of any of those between now and passing a balanced budget. Member Jacobs.
I was going to move that we adjourn to executive session for the purpose of legal updates, negotiations and contracts.
For a second?
Second.
Moved in second that we adjourned to executive session for the purpose of contracts, personnel and whatever else you said. And there, yes, thank you. Is there any opposition to moving into executive session? Seeing, hearing none, we're going to move into executive session at this time. Thank you. Right, no items on there. We're going to talk about you.